We're gonna open the meeting at six thirty four. We have a forum. We have three members, two are not coming tonight, so we won't expect them to come in. Both known, so. Want to start us off with a virtual meeting information? David, if you've collected yourself from your technological adventure.
My venture. Every day is an adventure pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, best general law, chapter thirty A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbardston Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting will be found on the town website. The select board and town administrator will meet in person as per the Hubbardston Board of Health Direction, given their March twenty third, twenty twenty one meeting. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via Zoom. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post the towns on the town's website, the comprehensive recording of the proceedings after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, I watched the, the video last time, the first time it was in person, which, which guys moved right along. Yeah, for real, which was great. And, but I guess my question to you is, did David and Aaron, any feedback on this new format at all?
We heard that the volume wasn't good.
Okay.
But that's the extent of it.
Okay.
I think that everybody's looking forward to relaxing the standards on May twenty ninth.
Yeah. Sounds good. Okay, well, we're, we're, we're an open session. Anything from, from anywhere?
Nothing.
Okay, David, no. Sounds good, and nobody's here to. Participate in that. So, general consent, we've got a couple of minutes to approve.
Yes, could you hold just one moment? We do have a hand raised. Um, it took a little bit. I have Alice Livdahl have her, has her hand raised if you'd like to take a look at that for open session?
Absolutely.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Hey, my question is, um, this just came up last Thursday, and I haven't actually even addressed it to the planning board yet, but I thought I would ask you, present it to you, and that is that MRPC, you know, just helping us with the master plan wants to, it has a need to conduct a public survey for public input into the master plan. And we've, we've been able to do before COVID, we were able to have hearings on individual chapters, and then we kind of got shut down. And then we have had very poor public participation in our meetings. I'm sure you haven't had great public participation either. So what they're proposing is that they do a monkey, you know, Survey Monkey. Is everybody familiar with that?
Yes.
A survey through which they would design, run, pay for out of the grant funds we have. And it would ask for town participation, and it would ask for like a couple of questions regarding each chapter. So a couple of transportation questions, a couple of, you get the point, right?
Yeah.
So they like to do that, and there is a deadline. They'd let, they were hoping to have this done by June thirtieth. Because of either, it's either compliance with existing grant funding or where they're now moving in from to the, the final chapter. So they're finishing the land use and they're going into the implementation chapter. And honestly, I wasn't sure whether David Hume said, or John Hume said to me that the deadline resulted from, I don't know which, which it related to, but it, they're trying to make that deadline. So they said they could do that, and I suggested that maybe they could, that we could hand out a card at town meeting where the likely people that would reply anyway. And the card would just say something like, you know, help the town finalize the master plan. We need your participation, and it would have like the web address for the, for the, you know, the monkey survey and maybe, what do they call it, QR code? So we wouldn't really discuss it. It would just be members of the planning board being able to hand out a card like that. And then, you know, we'd also put it on the website and some other places and try to get as many responses as we could. So I'm floating that idea to you. I don't know whether you're the people that decide that, but I was afraid you might not have any more meetings before the actual town meeting, and I gotta get back to them.
Yeah, I see no problem with it. Why not?
Yeah, there's no problem with that.
Good idea.
Yeah, I don't know. Did she need a vote for us, from us on that, or?
I don't think so. It's informational alone.
Yeah, I agree, Alice. It is informational. You, you, I appreciate you coming to us just to make sure there's no sort of precedent for something like this, but, but, you know, it sounds good. And I'm sure fiscal, the fiscal year for almost everything in Massachusetts is June thirtieth, so that's probably it.
Oh, well, that may be. They have done this with Survey Monkey before, with some success.
Yep.
So.
Hey, Alice, what, what are we surveying for? What's the topic of the survey?
It's for, there will be a few questions relevant to each chapter in the master plan. So like a few questions regarding like transportation, you know, a few questions regarding maybe historic preservation regarding public safety regarding the town, you know, it would be not exhaustive, maybe thirty questions that then can feed into the, to the land use and implementation chapters.
Yeah, and time of year wise, I mean, if there's a time of year that people are more engaged than others, it's probably a right around town meeting. You know, I know there's not a big amount of people who contribute to all this sort of stuff anyway, but might as well get them while they're at least thinking about the town.
Okay, I'll get back to them, and I thank you very much.
Alice, before you leave, the planning board is required by law to give a presentation before the two zoning articles come up. And certainly these zoning articles relate to the goals of the master plan one way or the other. So you can wrap that into your commentary.
Oh, okay, but to say, will you also please help us with master plan? I'll, yes, that would be great to give a little to do that. I've also asked the moderator if, you know, Carolyn Reed for Habitat Humanity, for Humanity is going to be available, and he'll let her speak if there are questions. He said. So. Okay. Thanks, guys.
All right.
Around, I just, we'll mute again. Bye-bye.
Bye. All right, Erin, anything else come up during Alice's time?
No, I have not seen any additional hands.
All right, so we've got a couple of sets of minutes, April twenty sixth and May tenth, that we can, we can review.
And I apologize because I noticed this when I first brought the screen up. This first one is actually the twenty sixth of April. I will amend that date as of right up here. You can see it does say May tenth. This is actually the twenty sixth of April.
Sounds good. So we, we were all present?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve minutes for April twenty sixth as presented with the fix of the date there.
I'll second. Okay, seconded and discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on favor, Dan abstain, Chris?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, and the next is May tenth, which I was not at. You guys were, but we can still review and consider.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion that the select board approves the minutes of May tenth as presented.
I'll second it.
Seconded, any discussion? We'll vote on favor, Dan abstain, Chris?
Yes.
And Katie?
Yes.
Okay, moving forward, announcements, want to go through anything?
Yes, I got a whole bunch. So this Saturday, we have the Fieldstone Farm hike with the Open Space Committee out on Lombard Road at one o'clock. If anyone wants to check out that, and you can ask any questions, it is, the, the Fieldstone Farm is going to be an article on the warrant, so there's your chance to ask in person all the questions you'd like to the open space if you still have any questions on that property.
So they have given a ton of information.
Yes.
Yeah, they are putting it out there.
Rick, I, I have talked to him. It's very, I've asked a lot of questions because people keep asking me questions because I'm on the social media, so I've suggested to him that he brings a whiteboard to town meeting to explain it because it is very, it's very confusing on why we're spending the seventy, it makes sense when he explains it all in full, but it is very confusing to get to the reasons why. So, but he can explain it all, and the open space will explain why there's, they're asking for the money and, but you can check out the property with them on May twenty second, this Saturday at one P M. We do have the June Fair, Hubbardston Fair coming up June twelfth from nine to two, the rain date thirteenth. We do have a lengthy amount of vendors coming. We have some jugglers. We have, there's a lot of things. There's gonna be a Hummer there from the, what are the people over there?
The National Guard.
Yeah, National Guard will be there with Hummers and all kinds of bling. The Memorial. Mr. Shea will be there with his Ghostbusters. Echo One will be out there. We're going to have a band all day. We're gonna have a beer. The Gardner Ale House will be there with beer. You have to stay on the grounds, but you'll be able to go to a table or whatever, your, your spot. Bring your camp chairs, your, your blankets to sit down, listen to the band, Neon Alley all day. There's lots of food this time go around. I have a lot of different, we have tacos, we got, what do we have grilled cheese? We have hot dogs. We got pulled pork, so there's gonna be lots of food and plenty of different vendors to poke around and shop and local businesses to hand out things. So it's gonna be a good day. And if it's rainy, it'll be the next day, and that will be a good day. April, August fourteenth, we have a new thing coming up. We got, the Girl Scouts are doing another bottle and can drive. There were so many bottles and cans at that first one that they, the bottle and can people actually reached out and said, we have an open date. If you want it, it's yours. So we picked that up. It's gonna be nine to one on August fourteenth, so bring your bottles and cans to the rec field. The girls will be out there sorting and touching all the stinky beer cans. It's so much fun and super fabulous for all.
Greedy, greedy Girl Scouts.
Yes, no, they're, no, they are entrepreneurial little girls that can run some business, let me tell you. We are teaching them how. And then August twenty eighth, of course, we have the Dingle Dash at ten A M. with a rain date the twenty ninth. So start thinking about your ideas of building a boat. That was actually made into, what is it, North County guide, field guide or book guy? Yeah, there's a whole picture. Owen, Jesse's son, Owen, yeah, is in there with a picture. Yeah, full picture. It's great. I was like, ooh, full picture, holy cow. So, yeah, so actually making that event's actually kind of taken some steam as well along with like, yeah, the light fight. So we're, we're picking up some, some good reviews on that around. So, and then we have, of course, Field Day on September eighteenth with the Lions from nine to three with the rain date of the nineteenth. So again, it's gonna be a good summer, and yeah, it's gonna be fun, and that's all I got for announcements right now.
Awesome. I'm amused that I just used Jesse's maiden name as well for some reason. I hope she sees that someday.
Yeah, she will.
But, all right, thank you. New business. So we have the first item, which is the main item, why, why we call this sort of extra meeting here, which is the discussion of the Hubbardston Center School roof bids. I think we all have, either in our packet or in front of us, the results of those bids, yep. And we got four bids. I know that you guys discussed this last week as well. And just to sort of reiterate, anyone who doesn't know that, but the four bids were Cape Way Roofing Systems, M D M Engineering, Greenwood Industries, and Titan Roofing. The forms that you have in front of you show the bid results as well as all of the required documents that are to be submitted along with the bid. You can see Cape Way Roofing was the low bidder with two million forty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. That is less than the, the estimate that the architects and construction manager listed it at, which was two million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. So in this time of crazy commodities, that, that was really good news that we can go with, if we choose to go with the, the low bidder, that, that a couple of them were, were below that estimate. So, so, you know, it's all good. We, we, as you can see along the, the top there for Cape Way Roofing across, they have a few items beyond the checkmarks, certificate of contract eligibility, average score. So D C A M, which is Department of Cap, Capital Asset Management and Maintenance. You have to have a certain requirement, a certain certification to bid on these projects, which all of these firms do. And then after you complete a project, the project team or the project director gives you a score. So they have a ninety, which is good, you know, you know, all of the firms that bid it are all sort of responsible, and they were vetted by the architects in the meantime from when the bids were, were submitted to now. They also knew them as well. We did have them look in because you see some motion violation stuff on there. It had to do with some fall protection, which is, you know, one of those things when you're a roofer, right? You really gotta be cognizant of where your, your, you know, tie off points and all that. So we're noting it, and we're gonna be, you know, the, the project team is gonna be watching that as they would normally anyway, but not, not a cause for for anything further than that for the, the project team, you know, during our, our last Friday meeting. So what we're here to do today is, is, is to decide, you know, to discuss them and, and see whether or not we want to award formally the, the project, the Cape Way Roofing, which will allow them to start buying materials and, and, and all that stuff. So basically, our award, because the way the procurement set up would then authorize Sheila Muir, the superintendent, to sign their contract along with them and make, make things proceed along that way. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
I have a question about this average score that's out of a hundred.
It is. So the, the way that those, 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 because we do that work as well, so they have, call it ten questions, fifteen questions says, you know, you know, timeliness of work, how the work looks, you know, aesthetics, treatment of subcontractors, handling of, and all that sort of stuff that's on there. And then they get rated for that, and then it comes out, generates out a score. So nineties is, is a good score. So, yeah. Let's do it.
Okay, all right. I was just seeing if anyone else had any more questions. I didn't want to like rush anything. All right, so let's make a motion. The Select Board moves to award the Hubbardson Center School Roof Replacement Contract to Cape Way Roofing Systems in the amount of, it's the first one, right? Two million forty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, right? Yes.
Yep.
Second it.
Okay, seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, and yes, Chris?
Yes.
And Katie?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Sounds good. So we will, David, could you send an email tomorrow to, to the project team? Let them know that the next step has been taken, and then they've got a, a way to go from there. This is great. I mean, we moved it along as quick as you possibly can. Contract is gonna be appreciative, all that sort of stuff. So it's real good news and a, a big, big project for the town. Cool, all right, so that's that. Next item, oh, thirty-six is the, which we just did that, sorry, oh, thirty-seven is municipal building discussion.
Can we, can we turn back up to oh, thirty-six, since we don't have the contract physically here?
Yep.
We have a motion to authorize Dan to sign off behalf of the Select Board. Any documents or?
Or funding authorization, something like that, right? I think that's a good idea.
I will make the motion that the, we move that Dan can sign off on any authorizations for funding or signage that needs to be done for this roof contract.
Second it.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Dan, yes?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, David. And the next is the municipal building discussion, so why don't you?
All right, so, yeah, so I've been sitting on, when I can, for the C I P C meetings and been listening in and just sit there quietly most of the time unless they ask me a question directly. And so that committee, who is chaired by Mike Stotter, they are looking for direction from us from the next step, and I don't want to sit there and just be the, the only person making decisions for the whole damn board. So we're gonna bring it up here. So they are, they originally were tasked to do a presentation at the town meeting, which obviously this is not going to happen in a week. I'm seeing that they don't have any hard numbers. They're still poking around at things and everything else. So they're considering a possible presentation if we have a special town meeting this fall, but they need some direction. Now, they're looking at right now a possible phase one, phase two, phase three kind of idea with phase one being a phase one A or phase one B, depending on how it plays out. Phase one A, we are looking, or they are looking at the possibility of John's Auto. We are doing a, I suggested they need to go, you know, with a walkthrough with the, you know, fiery prime with Bob out there because there's gonna be some issues. Obviously, there's only three bays there. There's a house there. There's a steep driveway that normally isn't a problem, but if it's in the middle of a blizzard, that's gonna be a problem. So there's some logistical stuff that obviously needs to be looked at. So my suggestion was to get everybody together and go do a walkthrough to look at it to see if this is going to be a realistic viable issue, you know, thing that could possibly happen, which we are doing. And you're joining us as well, yes, on the twenty seventh at four P M.
What is, what is John's Auto?
So right next to the pot place, across the street from the bus.
Triple A, the one that on the right side heading towards Gardner with, he staged a big boat there for years underneath the awning. That's on the right side.
So, yeah, which it would be like a couple of years down the road. He's looking at selling. So it's not an overnight thing. This is not anything that's in the works. It's a possibility. And then if that isn't either an option or they, it's just not gonna work or whatever, Plan B would be looking at building something new. And the question is, what? Is it just a new fire station or is it a police and fire or, you know, like this, this, we have all these options. Phase two, if phase one A worked, it'd be the police. Where are they going? And then phase three would be, okay, slate, what's going on there? Now, I did have a chat with Jamie Pitney at one of the Boy Scout meetings I was at. We were talking about, apparently the Army Corps of Engineers does work for the Boy Scouts building things. And he showed me this email, and he's like, why don't we ask them if they could possibly work on building a building and we could get a reduced rate? So I did mention that to Mike Stotter because Jamie was, I told Jamie to reach out, which he didn't at that point. So I asked Mike to reach out to him, but I had also mentioned it, David, and David's going to look into it as well to see if that's even in the realm of possibilities, if we were to build something new, if we could use them to get a lower dollar amount somehow. But there's a lot of ifs, whats, and yeah, questions. So they're looking for which direction do we think they should go for a presentation? Because the biggest thing is, is to even get this ball rolling, to get real numbers, we are gonna have to start sinking money into it. One way or the other, to get plans drawn up. If, even if we have to, if we do go down the road of John's Auto, okay, there's only three bays. There's four bays at Station Two, excuse me, Station One, and then there's still the, the bay at Station Two. So realistically, three bays is not enough. And then you have a whole house that doesn't really work very well with what a fire station. So it's, it's gonna, and it's gonna need some kind of water collecting because you can't just be posing all this nasty off and just letting it go, you know, it's, there's a lot of things.
Well, I think, you know, it, what it's doing is, is making sure everyone knows we're trying to think of everything. And, you know, the la, the last resort, which, again, we, we didn't stick our heads in the sand about the buildings issue. And that's why we asked them to think about in the first was to use all of the comments we got from the town in the last few years. We said, if we're gonna do something, what's it gonna be? That was police, fire.
Yeah.
Right? So we're looking at all the other options first, and if they don't work out, and we have to get to a point where we're spending some money, we already spent fifty grand on a, on a preliminary design. So we have that on the, on the, the, the bookshelf to be able to look at for police.
That's police.
That's police and fire. Yeah, so we already have a, a starting point there without a doubt.
Because they need that information.
Yep, okay.
They, yeah, they don't have that after.
Well, that's good. So we, we already have that, but still, what they were doing here is we're just trying to think of everything. And I think it's, the first time I saw it, I never even contemplated. So can, can, absolutely can't hurt to take a look at that, so.
No.
Okay, all right.
All right, so basically, we're gonna go look at John's, and then we'll tell them point blank that we have that preliminary plan, which is.
I'm gonna send it to you guys. So everyone on that
Okay.
email thing, I'll just send it to everybody so that they can do with it what they want from there, but I have it in the old.
And then.
John's is amenable to
He's looking.
People coming down there.
Yes.
Aware of all this?
Yes, yeah, we have a meeting with him on the twenty seventh. Yes, they've been talking with him for a possibility of the town buying.
How much property could be on there?
They said it too in the meeting. I can't remember. It's, it's a couple acres, but it's also, a lot of it is in D C R watershed protection, like the whole backyard and stuff, so there's a problem there.
There's no possibility for.
Well, there's certain.
Going on to the building.
Well, the building that's there, a big chunk of it is a house that realistically either could be converted or knocked down and done something different with in the footprint. So there's an office space in the middle, and then there's the three big huge bays. So, um, I mean, and those bays are good size. The three that are there, I've been in John's Auto. It's, and the offices are pretty decent. It's office space. You know, I haven't been in the house. I don't know what that looks like, but again, the house part isn't really. I mean, they need a little place to sleep, but in a kitchen, you know, because they do stay there, but I had not a whole house.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I've been in the office too. The office is probably exactly what you need, just a little office right in front, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, I guess we'll report back after that, then.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll keep them. So basically, that's, yeah, we can talk there too as well with, after hearing what John has to say. But they're looking for what, they're hoping to do a presentation at the, if we have a special town meeting in the fall. But they want to know, like, which direction, point blank, do we want them to go? So, all right.
All right, sounds good. So we've got, we've got to old business now. We do have an item of old business we want to talk about, right, David?
Unforeseen forty-eight hours in advance.
Right.
The election warrant that was signed by the board
Yep.
had an imperfection in it. It listed two positions for the planning board for five-year terms each. And it turns out it's a one-year term for one of those positions.
But that's these in front of me here?
That's correct.
So, so we would have to vote to approve this as the revised?
Right.
And then sign it tonight.
Right, we need to get that back to the town clerk.
Okay. So, so what it says on here, you guys have seen this before, but it's got the, you know, the different positions on there and the terms. And what he's saying is there's two planning board ones up here. Instead of five-year, five-year, it says five-year, one-year. So that's the change.
All right, so I will make a motion that we accept the revised town warrant for approval.
Second it.
Any discussion? All right, we'll vote, Dan, yes, Chris?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Sounds good. I will sign and pass around. Okay, so that is that. David, you want to go through a town administrator's report? I see we have one in front of us.
Very briefly. CDC relaxed standards for masking for fully vaccinated adults on Thursday last, when Governor Baker immediately came out and said, not so fast. But he is going to, he has announced his intention of lifting those restrictions for masking on May twenty ninth. And in fact, lifting all the COVID nineteen related restrictions. And on June fifteenth, he's expected to end the state of emergency for the Commonwealth. One of the marijuana facilities located at fifty-six Gardner Road has received its special permit from the planning board. That project is now active and the provisions of the host community agreement are in effect. We should start seeing some payments on July first. Change in the week since we met.
Excuse me, one moment, please. We do have a hand raised by Alice if you'd like to see what she'd like to speak about.
Yes, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Hate to bother you again, but I just wondered where you were mending. We just caught this mistake with the two five years. How does that work on the ballot? How that? How will that work on the ballot? Are you gonna have a three-way race for the five-year term and a blank, write it, you know, or are these, yeah, it is gonna sort themselves out? Have you thought through it?
That's an interesting question, and the town clerk has been working with KP Law all afternoon to work that issue. But the first part of putting this back on the tracks is to repost the election warrant. And then we'll take further steps as town council advises.
Okay, so you'll let us know, maybe by Thursday when we meet? David, right?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so updates, we got the revenues through April and.
I'm sorry, one more time, there was just a hand raised as well by Francois, I'm guessing about the same topic.
Sure.
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, excellent, thank you. May I assume at this point in time that those individuals who have been, who have posted themselves as candidates will be notified of this change and that they, through Lori, at that point in time, will have to make that determination as to how they are going to be post, posting themselves, postulating themselves for this election? I mean, is this something that automatically happens or what's, what's the next step? Because we're very close to the election, that's why I'm asking the question.
So I can speak to that, I'm waiting for Lauren Goldberg to call me back. As far as the position, I did speak to town council, town council said it is, the way that the, the nomination papers were printed, it's still a five-year term. But what it is, it's a one-year left of a five-year term, so there might not be an issue with that. The issue is, is right, what the candidate, where they're gonna fall in that race or how it's gonna be listed on the ballot. So waiting, I am going to reach out to Peter Jeps, but I didn't want to, I didn't want to worry him if we were gonna hear today. So I will be talking him to, to tomorrow, we still do have time, the election warrant actually doesn't need to be posted until next week. So we posted it very early, hoping that, you know, we would just get it done and over with. So there still is time for this to be done. Like I said, it's just a matter of how the ballots will look and who's running for a certain spot on those ballots. And I was hoping that they would call me today, they didn't, so I should have an answer tomorrow.
Well, Lori, just so I understand that, sorry Francois to jump in, but just so I understand that, so, so what you're saying is they are, because all positions are what the, the term, you know, is stipulated in that committee, so all planning board positions are five years, so this would still be a five year. It's just the last year of a five year?
Right, so that's what they're wondering is how that's gonna fall, is if, if it's going to be, because there was posted before as a one-year position filling a five-year term, but it could be the other way too, where it's a, a five-year position, but they're filling the last year. So we need to see how they want to word it or how they want to run it, and that's gonna be up to Lauren. So like I said, all planning boards are five-year terms, but what happened was we had a lot of resignations, people showed in there, they showed their terms ending. But when the report was run, it showed two people expiring, but it didn't say who was filling whose term. So that's where that came down to. So there is a one-year filling of Craig's position, which was done in 2017. He resigned leaving that one year, and that's where the staggered years fall. When you pull nomination papers, the one other thing it doesn't say is it doesn't say your term expiration date, it just says a matter of years on the, you know, ballot. So is it a matter of we need to have people pull papers again for those spots? Is it a matter of we need to just have a notarized signature saying you're running for this spot? So it's just, unfortunately, she didn't call me back, I've been checking my email just in case a voicemail came through as of before this meeting, and I still haven't heard anything.
Lori, thanks for checking and greatly appreciate the work you're doing.
Yeah, sorry, we, you know, I'm glad you guys found it, you know, unfortunately, it was, it was done. And so I'm glad it was found before the election process happened. And then, like I said, so we're just, we're working on it as hard as we can, you know, it was brought to my attention, I brought it to David's attention and we were working on it, you know, immediately, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Lori, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, so the good news is that we have the revenues through April and you have collected more than 95% of your revenues for the year. And you've got another two months to go. So at some point in, in May, you're going to start building free cash, every dollar in, it's gonna be an extra dollar of free cash. So you're in really good shape for your revenues for this fiscal year.
Great.
And expenses are trending lower than expected, you should be at 83% of your expenditures, you're at 72.5%. So that's, that's also gonna be building your free cash, so expenses seem to be under control, your revenues are better than projected, not a bad place to be.
Great, yeah, I think, I think we, we were hoping it was gonna go in that direction, I know Ryan trumpeted conservatism and, and all that sort of stuff. And when it comes true, it's great, and when, when it doesn't, it doesn't hurt as much. So, you know, good to see, so, okay, anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Moving on, we've got policies to review, none, board and committee updates, I don't have any, anyone else, I know we just talked about some stuff.
Yeah, a whole bunch, yeah, that's, that's all I got.
Okay, I don't have any matters that I didn't anticipate, you guys have anything you want to bring up?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, okay, we're at public press question and answer, anybody got their hand up, Erin, or anything else?
No, no hands raised and no messages received.
Okay, well, that's it.
Motion to return.
Second.
Not debatable, it is 7:10, is there, we'll, we'll vote, roll call, Dan, yes? Chris?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
All right.